Good evening. I call this meeting of the Johnson City Board of Commissioners for Thursday, July 19, 2018, to order. If you will please stand for the invocation by interim priest Suzanne Silla from St. John's Episcopal Church, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send your Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice upon all who hold office on this city commission. Give them grace in the exercise of their duties. May their decisions faithfully contribute to the well-being of those who live and work in Johnson City, and may this community thrive as a result of their leadership. And finally, we pray for a spirit of grace on all who are in this room, a spirit of grace and of hospitality. This prayer is offered in and through your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. While we wait for Mr. Peterson to work his way up.
I'll rise.
A couple of items regarding the agenda. We have ordinance, where are we? Number six, A, 4664-18, which is the second reading of the rezoning of Mockingbird Lane and North Lane that affects the North Hills neighborhood. We had a fairly large contingent of residents there tonight show up. But this is not, second reading was not the public hearing. So what is the will of the commission? We also received a request from the petitioner to delay third reading until such time as the purchaser was in possession of the property.
Can I move that we do the second reading at our next visit, next commission meeting, and move that from tonight to the next meeting?
And advertise it as the public comment.
Two weeks.
And I think that's already been advertised, or it's in the process of being advertised.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Well, I'm glad we approved that earlier.
Well, it was scheduled to be public hearing on third reading, and then we just got word today or yesterday about the seller's desire to not have third reading occur before the transaction closed.
Really input will be exactly the same timeframe. It'll just be second reading instead of third reading.
Very good. All right. That's motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jennings, you got?
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
May I add something just in terms of update? And Mr. Peterson, if you said anywhere you want to put it on the agenda, just give an update about the bridge going across Johnson Parkway in terms of what activity is going to be going on there and facts of why this is happening.
I think we can just include that in the city manager's report.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Peterson.
Your first order of business is consideration of the minutes of your meeting held on Thursday, July 5.
Very good. Any comments?
Move of approval.
Corrections? Have a motion? About a second. Anyone?
Second.
I was absent, so I don't think I should.
I was trying to give you a chance.
There are only three of us that were there, so it's kind of hard to look that way.
We'll discuss down on this side. All right. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
As I was not present, I will abstain.
Commissioner Wise.
Likewise.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
Okay. Your next order of business is consideration of a temporary occasion license for the Chamber of Commerce to sell beer at the Gearing Up for America's Night Race event to be held at King Commons on August 14, 2018. All the appropriate reviews have been made, finding no disqualifying factors. The recommendation is for your approval.
Move of approval.
Second.
Do we have the applicant?
Yes.
Yes. Would you mind stepping up? We'll ask the questions, then we'll take the questions. Yeah, come on up, and if you'd give your name. How many times have you done this?
Just a few times.
Yeah.
First time this month, though.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Brenda Whitson, 603 East Market Street, Johnson City, Tennessee.
Read the rules and regulations regarding the sale of beer in the city of Johnson City.
Yes, sir.
Do you agree to abide by those?
Yes, sir, we do.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do not. Thank you for your support.
Now a move of approval.
There we go. We have a motion in about a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes. And if you'd like, for the millions of people watching us, would you like to tell us about your event?
Absolutely. Gearing Up for America's Night Race is Johnson City's part of a big plan for the entire week to celebrate NASCAR, Bristol Motor Speedway, and to welcome all of those thousands of people who will be coming into our region and leaving lots of money. Bristol Motor Speedway has agreed to provide transportation from other cities to guests who want to come to our event. So we're doing some really cool things that will involve families and children. Trek is going to actually do a bicycle ride that is the same ride sequence that they do for Taco Trek, and it's going to be led by a pace car. So instead of a, instead of the fastest half mile, when they come back, they're going to do an obstacle course, and that'll be the slowest, probably quarter of a block. So there will be music from Seth Thomas, food trucks, and lots of yard games and things to get people excited about welcoming all of our visitors, but also get them excited about being in downtown and in the greatest new area that we have of downtown King Commons.
Very good. Sounds fun.
Thank you.
And I would just applaud that your temporary occasion license is for an event that's almost a month away. Hashtag planning.
Hashtag, yes, indeed. But when you turn on a dime to take care of a customer and what they want each of the communities to do, you just do it.
Generally, we're looking at, it's coming up this Friday.
Tomorrow.
At least we gave you a little bit of notice.
Yeah, we like that.
Brenda, do they have any estimates on what they think will come in for the night race?
Right now, it, I'm not sure where they are, but I know from a hotel standpoint that we are looking really, really good to be, you know, in a sellout situation. So we think it's going to be good because they're doing a lot of pre-publicity and doing some things to really make it affordable for families to come even prior to leading up to the big race. So should be great.
I understand we may be sold out this weekend, too?
Yes, we are sold out this weekend. We have 133 fast pitch girls softball teams in town from all across the country.
Great.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Your next order of business is consideration of a temporary occasion license for the Downtown Johnson City Foundation to sell beer at the Founder's After Five event on July 27. All the appropriate reviews have been made. The recommendation is for approval.
Good evening.
Hi.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Reagan Streetman, 300 East Main Street, Suite 406, in that's downtown Johnson City.
Read the rules and regulations regarding the sale of beer in Johnson City.
Anum Bahart.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Remember, you only answer the question you're asked.
We might ask you to recite.
Oh, no.
Very good. Since you've made that claim, please recite them verbatim. You agree to abide by those rules?
Yes, I do. Yes.
But yeah, that's very important to say yes to that, too. Do you have any questions for us?
Move of approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the roll.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
And again, thank you for coming in early.
Hey, you know, it's not August, but it's not tomorrow either.
Got over a week.
Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
You want to tell us?
So Founder's After Five is a free event concert series that we host in Founder's Park most Fridays in the summer, with the exception of First Fridays. A nonprofit always pours the beer, and proceeds go back into that nonprofit. I represent the Downtown Johnson City Foundation, so a lot of the profits will go directly to improving downtown or being able to host other events in the pavilion space, Founder's Park, King Commons areas. About 300 to 400 people attend on occasion, and tonight's, or tomorrow nights, we expect a little over that, weather pending.
Greg, were you the sponsoring group for the event over in King Commons?
Tonight, is it?
Yeah. Did it win last Thursday night?
For the downtown dinner and a movie. That is sponsored in conjunction with Downtown Johnson City, the JCDIA, and Muncie. And that's been an event they host for free on Thursday evenings in July, and it's been very successful.
Worked pretty well.
Back tonight, they have Wonder Woman playing.
Okay.
And we're also renting the King Commons area to the Johnson City Public Library this evening as well for an event. So.
Thanks.
Who's the band next Friday?
This Friday is Empire Strikes Brass. Okay. And then next week is Rhythm in the Roosevelt from Johnson City.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay. Your next order of business is to consider eight appointments to the Johnson City Housing and Community Development Advisory Board. The recommendations are contained in the packet before you. And I would remind you that a number of these appointments are specific to particular neighborhoods and representation by someone out of that particular neighborhood group.
Very good. Would anybody like to make a nomination?
I've reviewed. Yeah, I've reviewed all eight, and I'm comfortable with every one of the nominations. So I'd recommend that we go ahead and approve eight nominations to the city's housing and community development advisory board as listed.
Second.
All right. We want to read those.
I can't.
Names, just to...
The eight nominees are Travis Hathaway, Mindy Bowman, William Forrester, Courtney Washburn, Stephen Dixon, John Baker, James Tenner, and Scott Harper.
Very good. Any discussion? Anybody else have a nominee? Very good. Do I have a second?
You do.
Okay. Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of the consent agenda.
Very good. Right to left, my right to left. Commissioner Wise, anything you'd like to pull?
My question's answered. Thank you.
No, but thank you.
I do not.
I do not.
Very good. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
We're moving too fast for you today.
Your next item for consideration is ordinance number 4665-18, which is our supplemental budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2018 that just closed. And ordinance of preparating additional funds to the various departments and divisions of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee with the additional revenue from local, state, and federal sources is ready for your consideration on second reading.
I did want to make one note. We have included the purchase of the church on Libertyville Boulevard in this reading, so.
So is that different from what we had on first reading?
It is.
So we've amended the ordinance between the first and the second reading. Okay.
$268,000. $264,000.
Do we have to acknowledge that in any way?
Other than what you just did.
We included it in our report.
I believe we just did. There you go.
Move of approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
Next ordinance is ordinance number 4662-18.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 4452-12 entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt a Code of Laws and Ordinances for the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and aminitory thereof for permits, tapping fees, and fair user charge system of billing for the use of the Johnson City, Tennessee water system" is ready for your consideration on third and final reading.
Have any questions? Any discussion?
Move of approval.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of ordinance number 4663-18. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 4453-12 entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for Permits, Tapping Fees, and a Fair User Charge System of Billing for Use of the Johnson City, Tennessee Brush Creek, Knob Creek, and Regional Wastewater Systems." And all ordinance is supplementary thereto and aminatory thereof by repealing ordinance 4453-12 and enacting the following provisions in lieu and instead thereof is ready for your consideration on third and final reading.
Move to approve 4663-18 on third reading.
Have a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
Next order of business is consider approval of a revised concept plan for the cottages at Cedar Rock. Song, if you would, please, sir.
This is a request from the property owner to approve a revision to the concept plan as initially approved for these cottages at Cedar Rock. This property was rezoned in 2017 from before Tera Business District to planned residential district. The only change the developer is making here is adding one additional lot to this property. He initially proposed 18 lots. At this time, he's proposing to do 19 lots. It falls within the density of that particular zoning district. Planning Commission reviewed this, approved, staff is recommending approval.
Move of approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
Next order of business is consider approval of a deannexation policy for the city of Johnson City. Song?
This is a policy that Planning Commission has worked on, recommended that the city commission approve this as a deannexation policy for the city. It's basically divided into three parts. The first part of the policy takes care of the deannexation criteria, basically six of them, three being location criteria. First, the territory needs to be in the border of the city. This is intended to avoid do not hold deannexation situations. The territory is not located within the adopted planning boundary as it were in 2004. This is the area that was determined to have impact on developments within the city limits as it existed at the time. And the territory is not adjacent to city-maintained public rights of way because the city obtains taxes to maintain these right of ways. Then we have three other policies, policy-based criteria. The territory has not benefited from the receipt of a materials agreement provided by the city to extend water or seawater services to that particular area. The city has defaulted in the implementation of a plan of services for that territory. This is one element provided in state law that could lead to the property owner requesting deannexation. And lastly, the annexation of the territory was not opposed by the property owner of record at a time of annexation. This is intended to avoid those situations where somebody could come in today, request annexation because maybe they have a kid for city schools, and then the very next year, the kid is out of city schools, and you request deannexation. So these are the criteria that the applicant will need to meet. In terms of procedure, once we receive the application, we review it. If it meets these criteria, an ordinance will be prepared right before the city commission. If the commission supports it on first reading, then it will go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then it comes back to the city commission for second and final reading. This is intended to follow the procedure basically laid down in state law, which says it is reserved to the city, basically the board of commission, as to initiate deannexations. So there isn't a procedure in state law for property owners to initiate that themselves.
I appreciate your explanation of that last point because I really was a little confused why we would have it come to us before it went to the Planning Commission. So that answered that question. I appreciate that. Can you define, or should you define in this, what territory constitutes? Is territory a single lot? Is territory a group of lots? Is territory an annexation that all took place at one time? I mean, territory is kind of a broad term, and I wonder whether that ought to be defined.
Turn through will basically mean the area requested for deannexation. It could be a lot. It could be multiple lots. It could be, basically, the territory as mentioned in the policy, it is the area that is requested for deannexation.
Because at one point, we had talked about if a deannexation was to come forward to the commission, that it had to be an area that was all annexed at one time, not single pieces of property. Mr. Peterson, do you anticipate any issues with that broader definition of territory?
I do not, sir. You know, the maps that you all use to do the analysis, have you got those handy?
I can pull it off from Z Drive. You want me to do that?
If you would. If you don't mind, let's, they did some mapping that they used as part of the analysis on what would qualify. If I remember correctly, there's only about eight or 10 properties in the entire city that are going to meet the criteria required to request the deannexation. And he can pull this up here in just a minute, and I think this will help you better understand the number of parcels that could potentially be included in a deannexation request.
If you can find it easily, that's great. If you cannot, you know, Mr. Peterson's advice on that is fine.
I can quickly look at that. It is in the system.
And I know that it's been looked at because I've received previous correspondence regarding the limited number of parcels. The other question I guess I have is, under location-based criteria, the territory is not adjacent to city-maintained public rights of way. Is that maybe a little too restrictive? Because I could certainly see a small portion of a publicly maintained right of way being the area that was requested for deannexation as opposed to a much broader area, and that would preclude that from occurring for that more concise, that smaller area. So is that too restrictive, or is that really what we want?
Based on the model that we run, we, you basically have single parcels. We will not have a situation excluding the city right of ways scenario. If you take the other five criteria, you basically have single parcels. And each of these parcels, some of them already have, they are joining right of ways already outside of the city limits, like in the gray area. You have this kind of scenario. In other cases, I think there are a few, one or two, where they are joining right of way, they're still inside the city limits. We don't foresee a situation where the right of way is going to constitute a problem.
So it's very limited.
It's limited.
Okay. What if we get somebody, we adopt this, and we get somebody who feels that our criteria is onerous? What is their recourse to that? Do they have the opportunity to come to the city commission to ask that it be considered even though it doesn't meet the criteria? Or are we going to hold 100% to this is the criteria, and we won't entertain it at all?
Sir, I think the policy mentions the very last paragraph in the policy, or the last but one section, discretion of the governing body of the city. This policy provides the annexation criteria. However, it shall remain the discretion of the city commission of Johnson City to remove territory from its corporate limits when the evaluation criteria provided herein is met. So that discretion, this board always maintains a discretion.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I am curious about territory, now that Commissioner Van Brocklin mentioned that. Why do we choose to refer to it? If what we're talking about, if we've identified the parcels that would be eligible, why don't we say parcel?
We could use the words...
I've just been here, and maybe I've just missed it, but that's the first time I've seen a policy include those, that type of verbiage. I'm just curious as to why now we're calling it territory. We don't refer to territory.
If you...
Except there.
Well, there's the Northwest Territory and the Yukon.
And if you look at the definition, and it says, "Especially in the U.S., Canada, and Australia, an organized division of a country that has not yet admitted to the full rights of a state." So...
It's a big territory.
Yeah. Well, it's a small, again, we're talking about parcels, why don't we just say parcel? Or why don't we say?
Property here.
If you'd like to change, I mean, we can change it.
I'm just curious. Give me a good reason why we're using that verbiage, and I'll shut up.
Let's brainstorm some...
Well, let's, some new words. Let's go.
I think if you look at state law that deals with the subject of annexation, deannexation, the language that is used there is territory.
Okay. Let's go.
There's a good reason.
How about a motion?
Move of approval.
Have a second.
I second the territory.
Why did you say that to me? Any further discussion? Micro-managing? Suggestions?
How about a few months?
Whoa, wait a minute. I forgot I said that. Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
I appreciate the rewrite. It's much more clear, yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Thus Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tumita.
Yes.
Thank you, Aslan. Good work on that.
It was.
Your next item on your agenda is consideration of approval of an agreement of sale for the purchase of property from Joe Wilson and Partners. This is property located along the Bristol Highway, immediately adjacent to Wing Deer. In our Monday Agenda Review Meeting, we had a fairly lengthy discussion about the need to ensure that we had an interconnection between Wing Deer and this proposed property for the purposes of ingress and ingress and getting maintenance equipment across those types of things. I have been in conversations with Mr. Wilson, as well as the adjoining property owner, Mr. Sell. We had a proposed agreement that came over to us yesterday afternoon, legal, and our survey group has reviewed it. What's in that agreement doesn't accomplish what was verbally discussed between the parties. Our survey group is in the process now of going out and doing a survey and rewriting legal descriptions, and Jimbo and Carl McInturf have massaged the agreement between the parties. So that is not ready for your consideration. Based on our conversation Monday evening, I thought your direction was pretty clear that we wanted to make sure we had all the i's dotted, t's crossed, and all the issues addressed before we approved this agreement of sale for the 36 acres. So based on that direction, I would recommend that we defer that action on this item until we get the other item cleaned up. I fully expect all of that to get completed next week, and it would be ready for your consideration at your next meeting. And I have talked to Mr. Wilson, and he's fully aware of all of this.
Very good.
Yeah, I think that's an important expectation to be met. It's got to be there. The property loses a lot of value to us if we don't have that interconnectivity side. Move deferral with it to be brought to us at the next formal commission meeting.
Are we confident in the first meeting in August, or would it be helpful to say even no later than the second meeting in August?
That's always a safer option.
Because there's two or three people have to keep going back and forth, and I guess I would rather set the expectation and get it done in August, but not set it up that we're having this delay conversation again in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Not to exceed the second meeting, maybe?
Yeah, not, which is what, I think the 18th or 16th?
Yes.
I understand that. However, things have a tendency to languish at times if there isn't a little bit of an insistence on things being accomplished in a certain period of time. So I would much rather that we have it before said that first meeting and that we make that request. However, if that's not the way the balance of the commission feels, I'll withdraw my motion and let somebody else.
Well, I'll second your motion. If it's not ready, it's not ready, and then we have to defer it to a week. So, you know, whatever. We'll get it done. I mean, we're ready to get it done.
I didn't mean to complicate things. I thought I was simplifying.
All right, any other complication? I mean, any other?
Not yet.
Give me a minute.
It's about the territory.
That's right. All right, Ms. Jennings, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Brocklin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Tomita.
Yes.
All right, that takes us to the manager's report, I believe, yes. On Monday evening, several of you had made inquiries about the availability of a map or an easy way to look at city-owned properties. And I'd asked Link to send you all an email to give you the information on how to easily access that map. And during the course of our conversation, he was demonstrating to me the advancement in data management and a variety of data offerings to the general public that, quite honestly, I wasn't aware of, that they were that developed at this point. And I felt like it would be a really good opportunity right now to share with you all what data that we have mined and managed that's available to the general public simply by going to our website and gathering that information. So Link, if you would, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. As he indicated, this particular app on the screen is an answer to an inquiry from the commission to better understand where the city owns property and which facilities are on that property. I don't want to get too far in the weeds about how to operate it. It's hopefully pretty intuitive, and had a chance earlier to speak with some of you to give you some of the specifics. So I'll just highlight these filters at the top, and they provide you the opportunity to filter down by acreage, by land use, and by zoning. And so, for example, if I limit this now down to those properties that the city owns between 50 and 1,000 acres, you see that gets us down to 16 pretty quickly. So a large acreage size like that. And once you've filtered down to the level you want, or the selection that you're interested in, you can proceed. Here's the Liberty Bell complex. Anything inside the orange is, of course, a city-owned parcel, and the buildings themselves are color-coded to go with the department that manages that building. So in this example, zoomed in at this level, Water Sewer has two facilities, and Johnson City Schools have, looks like, 20, a combination thereof. So if you are further interested in any particular building or parcel, you can click on it, and there will be information available through the pop-up that should be appearing. There it is. And that will allow you to go out to the card at the state real estate site and learn more about what's going on on that particular parcel. So that's the specific application that Mr. Peterson had asked for, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that one in particular, or if it's all right, maybe move on and show you a few of the others that are available for the public. And just to point out that these are well-hidden on our website right now. So our new website, we hope, will bring our maps into much more sprinkled across the website, not all just in one place. So right now, folks can come to this link on the geographic information system page, and it will take them out to a centralized place where all of our mapping applications are visible to the public. We've recently undergone a data reorganization over the last couple of years, and that now has, as of today, a little over 2.6 million records in the geospatial database for 379 different features, or feature classes. That's a lot, and it's the most of anything around here, we think, in East Tennessee, and we certainly have a mature system. You have your predecessors on the commission and several GIS employees over the years to thank for that. The technology has improved, but the history, the data collection for that process throughout the years, folks like Glenn Berry and Don Keel and Monty Honeycutt and Ann Howland have all really contributed to the growth and made possible what we have here today. So they're to be commended for their work. So we have both public-facing applications like these that are available for anyone. And then we also have, there are 13 of those right now. And then we also have a group that I'll show you in a second if you're interested, for internal staff that we use to do our work, planning department, water sewer, public works. In other words, folks can take the data that are being used, the data feed both sides, is my point. And that's the point of Enterprise GIS. So maybe just take you through a couple of these. This is our most popular one, you might be interested to know, the Tweatsie Trail. Whatever else we put out there, the Tweatsie Trail always wins in the mapping applications. And people can come here and find out where to park, where to, how far they've walked, where they might... They can look and see which benches are dedicated to whom, and it's very useful for patrons of the Tweatsie Trail. We had an inquiry from Kathy over at Solid Waste, who wanted to help her customers field the "When is my trash day?" pick-up. So you can let folks know that they can come and click on the map, and it will tell them, oh, I'm in the green zone, I just clicked at random here, and that green means, as soon as it comes up, green means Tuesday, right? So you can inquire on the map and see when your trash pickup day... For residential, the commercial is a little bit more complicated. This is a park locator app that one of our GIS programmers, Ellen Lester, made because she was interested in finding the right park to go to for the activities that she was interested in. Ellen's been instrumental in this process of programming these apps, and I was pleased to see that she took a personal interest, too. So, for instance, you can filter down by hiking and walking trails, and then also those that have picnic tables. And so very quickly, you see the choices, and you can inquire, oh, that's Willow Springs, and I can go do the things that I want to do at that particular park. This is a revision to probably the... If you've seen one of our apps before, the Property Search App, this is probably the one that most people have seen. And we've recently revised it so that it maybe has a little less in it, so that it's a little less cumbersome to use. And the main point of this one is to show where the parcel lines are. We get all of our parcel line information from the county assessor's offices. It shows address information, and you can click on and inquire as to ownership and acreage and zoning, and just like in the previous example, you can click there for the real estate card from the state. This is one I'm particularly proud of because I think it speaks to Johnson City's transparency of information, and this is how we've chosen to advertise our data for open download. This is often useful for students at ETSU who get an assignment and need some spatial data. It's helpful for engineering and architectural firms, and they can come and inquire as to what they're looking for, anytime, day or night, weekends. It's really cut down on the number of data requests that our office has to field and allowed us to frankly make some more of these apps. Here's a zoning app that is used both by the public and by folks in the planning department. They can click and see exactly what is the boundary of the district, and then click the URL that appears in the pop-up and find the complete description of what is permitted in, for example, R3 medium density, so that anyone can find where's their property and what's allowed in that zone. Recently, in the past year or so, there's been the approval for the city's drone program, and we get aerial imagery from the state of Tennessee. The most recent flight, however, was from 2015, and of course, we've had a good bit of development in Johnson City since then. So it's not always up to date. So the drone program allows us a way to overlay our drone imagery on top of what the state offers to us. And so, for example, you'll recognize King Commons in its new form post-renovation. So those are just a sampling of the public-facing applications we've got. And just as a point of information, this is the internal portal that staff use. We've got similar applications, including one that's kind of a kitchen sink app. It's got most, if not all, of the relevant data layers, not all 379, but a good number. And our staff can come in there and work. They often want to see things in conjunction with each other.
Link, would they be able to use these out in the field? Do they have mobile devices that can access?
Yes. That's a great point. So you're anticipating my last one here, but I'll go ahead and show you. This is a sanitary sewer application that the water sewer department uses on their iPads and mobile devices to locate where the sanitary sewer manholes are. So this pushes to both mobile devices as well as desktop computers, and it's very helpful. All of these same layers that power these web maps power Cartograph and City View. And City View in particular has been, you know, a real help to us to be able to now track the locations of all of our planning and building permitting applications. And so this is a dashboard that shows where those applications are, much like the one we created for you. You can filter down, for example, by minor subdivision. The numbers change. You're able to see how many are processed this week, this month, applications updated this year, and where they all are. So it allows the planning staff to inquire and see what's perhaps before the commission right now. That's one of the statuses that they can inquire upon. I mentioned Water Sewer. They are probably the one department that has made the greatest use of the staff geospatial portal, and it offers not just the ones that we've curated above, but the ability for users to take our data, design a map that is relevant to their particular job. And so we've got a number of examples from Water Sewer where their staff and Jake Tittle have worked together to work on their individualized maps and to help them function in their individual job duties. We're doing some staff training in August. We're the first of many, we hope, to try and mint more GIS users among our staff and get more folks using these tools. We hope the public will be interested in the public-facing ones as well. We've planned some social media campaign to make them more aware of that, and the communications office is going to be working on that over the next few weeks to push those applications out via social media. It's been said that return on investment for GIS, dollar for dollar, is anywhere between three to five factor of investment. And so our job in the GIS division is to make that as high as possible and to return those invested dollars in the technology into tools that the staff and the public can benefit from and make Johnson City a great place to live and work and do business. That's what we're about, that's what we want to achieve, and that's what the technology should enable. I'm happy to take any questions, but I just want to say thank you for having the investment in this technology and the data that it uses, and I hope these applications are useful to you as well as to your constituents.
How do things stay relevant and updated?
It's a great question. We've got a number of staff who are dedicated GIS folks. That's their, you know, training and specialty. But with Cartograph, our work order management system, and City View, the permitting software that's now available, we've leveraged a great number of the workforce through their iPads. They're actually data editors themselves now in keeping this up to date because they're the closest to these changes. If they go out and put a pipe in the ground, they are the ones who mark that on the map, and it gets updated and it flows out to all of these applications. And so by leveling the playing field a little bit, we reduce the chokehold that having to pass everything through a GIS specialist perhaps used to be. It's a little more data democracy, if you will.
But we're linked to, let's say, property assessment, you know, is going to take place. When's the next time? Next year or something, maybe? Does it automatically update that once they've...
So that's a good example of one where it requires some special skill and training. So we are a downstream consumer of the parcels from the county assessor's office. They're the ones who draw those shapes on their side. We get a copy of that, and we ingest them into our system. It's a complicated process, but we've got good folks, and it happens on a weekly basis, usually.
Very good. Any other questions? Thanks, Link.
Thank you.
Thank you, Link. As Link pointed out, this is a great investment by the commission. There is an enormous amount of data out there that's available to the general public every day. It's just a matter of going out there and getting it. We used to get a tremendous number of requests for topographic data as people were trying to plan developments. We've got the detail on the website now to where the general public can just go grab it and go with it. And in some cases, the accuracy is such that you can probably skip the step of having to get a topo of a piece of property when you're sitting down figuring out what it's going to cost you to get the site worked on. So there's a great value, and I think there's another great tool to encourage people to come and develop and invest in our community because a lot of what they need is already out there. It's just a matter of getting the map and getting the data sets that you need. So hats off to Link, and he is absolutely one of those employees that has got his heart and soul and his work, and I really think that probably work is his hobby as well. You do a great job with it, Link. We appreciate you.
How do we get the public using this even more than they are now?
We're going to let Keisha do that. Yeah, she's back there with her hand up. We've started looking through that now as to how to make people more aware of it and to get that information out to people so that they are aware of it and take advantage of it.
And our school systems as well because of the research that students can do now that...
Certainly.
Be really valuable.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Okay. Other things that have been going on of significance. For the last two or three weeks, Keisha and I have been going downtown and trying to meet with some of the downtown merchants and property owners and just keep a pulse on what's going on and trying to keep people informed and build relationships and encourage folks to continue investing and developing, and let's make sure we've got good, solid lines of communications. That's enabled us to learn things that we weren't aware of, and from the reaction of some of the folks we've spoken with, I think that that's been a mutual gain from just the result of those communications. So that's been very positive and very... That's been very positive and very well received, as has our increased police presence and an increased effort in trying to keep the downtown area clean and in good working order, so to speak. The downtown merchants are very pleased with what we've been able to accomplish in the last month or so with those efforts. As you all are aware, the Langston project was approved. The bids on that were approved. We've had a couple of meetings and discussions with contractors, engineers, and some of the Langston folks about keeping that project on track and making sure it keeps moving forward. Speaking of meetings, I also recently had a meeting with the folks from Northeast State, just kind of an opportunity to visit with them and get an update on the status of the campus downtown. They have taken, I guess in the last 12 to 15 months, have taken a situation that was financially challenging and turned that around. They feel like they're in a good position now to where they have the resources to grow the campus here in Johnson City. And they're very active in trying to develop relationships and better understand the needs of employers and the secondary school system on how we can get folks with certificates, associate's degrees, those types of things, and learn what the local employers need in terms of employee skills and education. Try to be very involved in getting those folks ready for immediate employment. As you all are very well aware, with the employment rate being somewhere between 3% and 4% in Washington County, finding good, qualified employees is extremely challenging. And they've expressed to me they have every desire and intent to help us address getting people prepared to go into the workforce.
Don't talk at all about the parking garage there and its accessibility?
We did not get into the discussion about the availability of parking spaces. We did get into the discussion about, they feel like that they're in a good spot to grow their service area and to grow the campus. I believe the number, they've got, spring semester, I believe they said they had 450 students enrolled down there, and they were expecting to grow enrollment in the fall semester and look forward to working with, like I say, the other school systems and with ETSU. I guess an aspect of what they do that I hadn't really ever given much thought to was there are students enrolled at ETSU that may need some remedial help with something. And they have some ETSU students that are dual-enrolled at Northeast State to help them get up to speed and perhaps some classes that they need some extra help with. They have found that that's, you know, I won't say a significant part of their student load, but it's a measurable group of folks that are taking advantage of that. Speaking of employment challenges, I got word today that our headhunter has been, after over 2,000 personal contacts, we have 10 candidates for our Development Services Director position. And they're going to narrow that list and get something to Mr. Willis and I here in the next 10 days or so from which we can begin an interview process and see what we can come up with. I found that astounding that not just advertising, but personal contacts, 2,000 of them, and you get 10 applicants. I've also spoken with some folks associated with M-TAS. They've had a position. It's been open three or four months, and they've had two or three people that have expressed interest in it, and it remains open. Several of my counterparts across the state are experiencing the same thing. It's just very difficult to find quality candidates, or in this case, candidates in general. Chief Turner's got a need for 12 employees, and I think our interview pool is still holding steady at 26?
About 26.
27. So usually out of a group of 27, we won't get 12 out of it. Most people that want to work are working these days, I guess is a good way to recap what I'm saying. I had the opportunity last week with the mayor, the folks from ETSU gave us a tour of where they are with Fine and Performing Arts Center building as well as Building 60 over on the VA campus, which is a building that is extremely unique. And if you get the opportunity to take a tour of that thing, I would really encourage you to do that. It's a facility that's used both by pharmacy, nursing, PT, med school, to where they do simulations. They have set up simulated emergency rooms, nursing home rooms, family settings, to where they can bring in a collection of students that would likely be involved with the care of a patient somewhere in their career. They've set this building up to where medical professionals can learn how to interact with each other when they're dealing with a patient. It's really quite an astounding building that they've put together over there that I think speaks volumes for the quality of education and healthcare that we've got here in Johnson City.
Going tomorrow afternoon, so I'll look forward to it.
You'll have a good time. It's a phenomenal building. And you've probably noticed a lot of the heavy structural steel's going up now on Fine and Performing Arts. Was in a different meeting yesterday and was talking to the contractor on site, there's still quite a bit of steel to go up. And that building is still probably 18 months before, at least 18 months before it'll be ready for occupants or anything. They've got a long way to go. I mean, once you get the building envelope closed up, there's a tremendous amount of finish work to do on that. But it is moving, and everybody's getting real excited about the happenings with Fine and Performing Arts. The other meeting I referenced, I was in a meeting with the sports science group from ETSU about the sports science and training facility. The investors have sent over about $150,000, and the group has engaged a company out of Knoxville Partners Group that is going to do design development, some schematic design and probable cost of what the project will be. It was a good meeting the other day with people from ETSU. Partners has brought to the table a contractor and an architectural firm so that they can really sit down and start talking through what the programming needs and the space needs are. Dr. Sato has spent, I think since January, in Asia with the exception of four or five days. He's been over there training Taiwanese and Chinese athletes and trying to, through some coaches' clinics, get some coaches over there trained up. I think there's a real commitment on the part of some folks from Asia to start sending athletes over here to train. Unfortunately, I think they want to send exponentially more athletes than what we can handle with current facilities and staff, which is really, this project's really coming together. Now that it's demonstrated that the project is moving, the interest and the demand for the service is really building, and they are hopeful to get some numbers together so they can go back and talk to additional investors about investing in the project and hopefully getting something designed and under construction in the near future. I won't say it'll be in the next six months. It won't be anything like that. But it's moving, and I'm glad to report that our time, interest, and travels have proven to be a fruitful investment. And as we've said all along, if we can get this facility established, it's unlimited as to what the potential of this is in terms of international recognition for the community and the university, increased tourist and investment, the relationships with pharmacy and med school and with the healthcare system locally, the VA. They are literally working on smart clothing to where the clothes you work out in can send telemetry to your personal trainer in another continent, what's your respirations and all those types of things.
My personal trainer would be so disappointed in my clothes. They'd go, "We're in the laundry. I wasn't wearing them."
But it's really kind of neat to see this technology of the future coming together. And it's really even more exciting to think that Johnson City and ETSU could be right in the center of this and developing this and all the new technology and business spinoffs that could happen right here in Johnson City. Had a meeting this afternoon with some of the parties from Washington County concerning the Boones Creek Field Project. We met and kind of outlined what each party's needs were and the timeline that the county is on in terms of... They have a proposal in front of the full commission next Monday to hire Tom Williams and CHA to do a design development and evaluation of probable cost of what that project would involve and the feasibility of putting the four fields like we've expressed we would like to have on that site. So hopefully before the end of August, we'll be able to come back to you with a good estimate on will everything we want fit on that property, yes or no? And if yes, here's probably what it's going to cost? And if not, then, you know, what could be put on the property? So we should be looking at a decision point into August, early September on where that project goes.
So they're going to approve engaging them to do that next week, and we'll have a report in 30 days?
Yes, sir. I have been talking to CHA for three or four months about this. I mean, my earliest recollection of discussions about this project were right before Christmas. I know we were across the street talking about it. And I started talking to CHA then. So they've got a good understanding of what they've got to work with and what everybody wants in the desired project. They've really been working on this thing probably for the last three or four weeks in some form or fashion or another. They're probably well down the road with the end product that they're expected to deliver.
Clarence Maeve and I met with the Finance Committee for the county two weeks ago and presented in front of them sort of what we had been talking about and what we're trying to do. And CHA was there, and the mayor was like, "We need to get going on this. You know, we've got to get this approved." But if they wanted to look at it, and that day, the representative from CHA went out with some people from the city, with Tommy Burleson, I believe, and looked at the property and sort of started it really going at that point. So he told us that it would be four to six weeks, and somebody mentioned that it would be really nice to get it done before then if you could. And he said, "We could actually do it before that if we get pressure to do it." And so we sort of gave him pressure to do it. So that's where they are right now.
CHA understands all the things that we need to know in order to make a decision. Okay, now this is the group that we used up at Science Hill, is that correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, sir. Last week, I met with some representatives from Buxton. Buxton is a retail data management group. They are not retail recruiters by any means. What they do is collect and share data and build profiles for both businesses and communities. Commissioner Fowler and I had spoken with them recently at a TML meeting, and we did a follow-up meeting last week. In recognition of the fact that they have multiple other facets of their organization, one being collecting, managing data, dealing with tourism and tourism spending. I've shared that with Brenda Whitson, and we are working now to get another meeting set up or discussion set up that would involve the tourism piece of this. I think that if we're going to go down this path with Buxton, we really need to look at what all they offer and select what is going to be the complete package for us because we can talk retail recruitment or industrial recruitment, but with the emphasis on outdoor tourism, we really need to include a piece that I'm going to loosely call tourism recruitment and better understanding who our tourists are and how they spend their money and where they spend their money so that we can tailor our investments locally to meet the needs of what we know are our tourists coming in here and to meet the needs of the tourists that we want to draw here that we're not now getting. So Brendan and I are trying to get a meeting set up within the next month or so to talk with them, and that conversation will continue. But very positive, productive meeting. As you had requested at a recent meeting, we have engaged Shannon Castillo with Mitch Cox Realtors to represent us on the Woolworth Sears and Penny's Buildings down on Main Street. And that will also include the three very small shops on this end of the Sears Building. I don't know how better to describe it, but?
East.
The east end, yes. So she's working now on a best estimate on market value of that, and we will have a listing agreement finalized with her here in the next couple of days, and that hopefully will produce lots of good results for everyone.
It'll also include the parking lot behind?
It does include the parking lot, yes, sir. Thank you. And last but not least, as we have talked about during the budget process, we got an engineering firm to do an analysis of the pedestrian bridge at Science Hill. And that analysis reflected that the bridge is in a poor state of condition, that there are some structural issues with the bridge, and the recommendation was that the bridge be closed and/or removed. We decided in the budget process that we would remove the bridge, and there is not money in this year's budget to replace the bridge. We are currently on track to have the overhead structure of the bridge removed Monday night. It'll happen overnight. It'll involve closing John Egson Parkway. And that will move forward. There will be some follow-up work with the abutments that'll have to be done, but most of the crane work can be done in that one night, we feel like. I know there's a lot of conversation in the community about that right now. Here are the relevant points to remember. The recommendation is that the bridge be closed and/or removed. The bridge is not available for use for school this year, whether we take it down Monday night or not. The bridge must be closed. We're on notice that we have structural deficiencies up there. So we are going to proceed with taking the bridge down. Another relevant point to remember is that the first step in building a new bridge is tearing the old one down to make room for the new bridge if the commission decides to fund the replacement of the bridge at some point in time. So in wrapping those two points up, the bridge isn't going to be available for use by anyone, whether it's taken down or not. And taking it down at this point in time does not preclude us from replacing the bridge at some point in time in the future. We have always, since the initial discussion about this, recommended and asked our traffic and the school system folks to work together to develop a plan for all student loading and unloading to take place on campus. We are not in any means recommending that anybody drop off students across the street at the church and ask their student to walk across John Egson Parkway. We are recommending everybody load and unload on campus. So we feel like that that's a safe way to handle this and that the removal of the bridge is something we're going to have of the bridge is something we're going to have to do one way or the other. And I think it's very important that we get the bridge down before school starts because I would suggest to you that no matter what means we use to try to close off that bridge, somebody would climb over, under or around the blockade and use the bridge. And part of the problem is that there is spalling and loose concrete on that bridge deck that could break loose and fall off on a car underneath. So it's, there are multiple issues with that bridge and that's what's got us where we are and, you know.
Somebody had asked a question, why can't you just repair it? Could you address that?
From the engineer's report, it's to the point that it's probably beyond repair. You've got a lot of structural steel that's exposed, that has rusted. We have already made one round of repairs on this bridge and those repairs are now starting to disintegrate.
Yeah, and those repairs were not very long ago.
No, just about four or six years ago.
They weren't. I've also been made aware that someone has suggested that that bridge could be replaced for $100,000. Just as a point of reference, and these are two totally different types of bridges. In 1998, the pedestrian bridge at ETSU was built and there was almost right at a million-dollar cost to put that bridge up 20 years ago. So the $1.3 million estimate that we've gotten preliminarily from the engineers for to replace the bridge at Science Hill is probably a pretty good value in essence, considering the time value of money and the inflation over that 20-year period. I also saw a bridge, that bridge project we did down on South Run Street referenced today. And I believe the statement I saw was that that project cost $100,000. I don't really remember what that project cost, but I will clarify what type of bridge that is. That is an at-grade bridge across a creek that didn't require any ramps, vertical structural members other than the abutments to hold it up. And it's probably no more than 40 or 50 feet in length. So yes, we can do bridges for a whole lot less, but it's a totally different type of bridge. And in case anybody's interested in looking at the bridge I'm describing, go down South Run Street and it is immediately across the street from Food City on the opposite side of the road where the creek is. So you can see it's quite a different structure than what we're looking at at the Science Hill site. And I would be glad to answer any other questions or take direction or anything you may have.
Just a comment regarding the concerns that were expressed to us. Certainly, safety is right up there at the top. And we're addressing the safety of those who are transported to school by indicating to them they must drop off on campus. You know, we are probably going to put some things in place to prevent them from dropping off across the street more than likely if we get the opportunity to, at least that's what I've heard. But my concern is for the students who are there in the neighborhood, and we've talked about this as a commission. I would like to see at some point some real definite plans about where crosswalks are going to be built to handle those particular students' needs and what kind of amenities we're going to put in there to, which we've talked about a little bit as well, what kind of amenities are going to be put in place to make sure that those crosswalks are highly visible and definitely heated. So we've talked about that as a commission in our agenda meetings, but I really want to make sure that we move forward with that because I think that that is a legitimate concern for the kids in those adjacent neighborhoods.
Absolutely, yes.
One other point we may want to make is that land across the street is owned by a church. It is not school land or our land and they'd be nice to let us use it and have people drop off and walk across. And so be nice of us being neighbors of the church to talk with them about what we're going to do in the future if we're going to do something else there too.
And the school and our transportation department, Eldona, they're working on now to make sure that, you know, parents have good direction on where drop-offs are and have good guidance on that.
Schools and traffic are discussing that. Eldona stays focused on riding the bus. Those that get dropped off at Science Hill.
That's traffic.
We'd be glad to get them on a school bus and I promise you, we'll drop you off at the front door. That's a safe, that is the safest transportation to school that is available in the city of Johnson City. I promise you.
Another point worth clarifying, I think several people that I heard from asked the question, why would you save the landmark sign formerly known as the U-Haul sign and not save the bridge? And it's worth noting that no taxpayer dollars funded the project on the sign formerly known as U-Haul and that that project was about a $90,000 project. And so it too really doesn't stack up as an equal comparison. The sentiment is there. I think we would all like to see the bridge stay, but more importantly, we don't want chunks of concrete crashing through your windshield while you drive down John Exum. And we don't want the bridge collapsing like the pedestrian bridge in Florida did last year. And so we have to weigh those competing priorities and be sensitive to them. Very good. Anything else?
No, sir.
That brings us to the end of our agenda. Anybody have anything they'd?
I'll just add on to something Pete was talking about for the outdoor tourism, just kind of an update on our outdoor task force, which really has made significant progress. We have now on the task force the entire region, including Southwest Virginia. So net reps, I mean, excuse me, net reps, but networks also has a representative, Green County, Johnson County, Carter County, I mean, all the counties around, as I said, in addition to Southwest Virginia. One of the things that is, one of the big focuses of this group now coming together is kind of connectivity, how we join things to bring our region together from the outdoor standpoint. We just heard last week or week before where a kayak company now was moving over to Irwin, moving from Asheville, but that's a retail kayak. So as we've looked at kind of the outdoors, we keep, we first of all start thinking about the tourism attached to that and the availability of things for our citizens to do. But there's a lot of retail and support organizations and companies that support the outdoors. And when they start seeing the progress that we're making here or hearing about our activities, we're going to see more of that. You may have also seen last week that the U.S. Forest Service, who is on the outdoor task force, announced that they are going to open up the trails along Buffalo Mountain from our city park, Buffalo Mountain Park, being the gateway, all the way down to 107. Of course, there are many, many logging trails through there, but they're going to cut out, you know, a trail system and mark it and clean it up and get it ready. So that'll be a real attractive thing for people to come right here in Johnson City, have a gateway to that. And so people are starting to work together and I think that's just a really positive thing.
Mayor, I've got a couple, three things. First, Mr. Peterson, I want to indicate my thanks for staff beginning to meet with the downtown merchants. I've had some real positive comments about that. I think that that can only be helpful to the development of our downtown. So I certainly appreciate that. Another appreciation goes out to Phil and to his men for some of the plannings that they've been doing. The plannings on Legion Street at the Elizabethan Highway, a nice addition, cleans things up immensely there. The plannings at the freeway in State of Franklin, that bank is beginning to be developed. That's going to be really nice when that gets done and hugely important as a gateway into our community. So I would encourage Phil to continue down that road and I hope we're putting appropriate dollars into it to be able to not only develop it, but to maintain it as well. Couple of other matters, TIFF committee met this morning and had a request from the Sesquicentennial Commission, which commission is aware of that meeting being held. The request of $350,000 was deferred for the time being. So we'll continue to look at that and weigh that. My hope is that they're very successful in raising the private dollars that they've indicated that they will be able to and that $1.3 million commitment by this commission in addition to the private dollars is sufficient to get it built without additional public dollars going into it. That's a personal feeling. But that request was in that amount, so the commission understands it and it was deferred for the time being. As we look at JCDA, which I serve on, there are potentially some large projects looming. And so I would like for the commission, we've had this conversation before about how do you encourage certain people and certain types of people to be on our authorities? I think it's going to be extremely important moving forward that we have probably a greater number of people who have a strong financial and are banking and financial background. And so as we look at some of what's coming before us as far as recommendations, perhaps we don't take every recommendation. Perhaps we try to get a certain type of person on the authority going forward. Certainly, we need a little bit better representation for downtown merchants. So I'm going to look at that as being a factor that's important on this authority, but that financial piece is going to be huge going forward. So I would just kind of recommend to everybody that that be one of the things that we look at very critically as we're moving forward with a number of appointments that are going to be requested shortly. And then finally, happy to announce, and I think it's probably been in the press, but I'm not sure that it has. I've been knocking doors and not reading my paper here lately. We have a new library director, Julia Turpin, and she just is very enthusiastic as our short-term former one was, brings great credentials and I think she'll be a wonderful director, very, very well-accepted in the period of time that she spoke with our staff at the library as somebody that they will feel comfortable serving under. And I think she'll be a great cohesive force for our library and one who will look at what the possibilities are in the broader community very nicely. Yeah, there's a little bit of uncertainty there. It will be sometime in August. It has to do with packing up and moving from prior community to a degree. It also has something to do with childcare.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure I got a chance to go see her, what she got here.
If you have not met her, and I know we did things a little bit different this time, so I'm not sure that she got to meet any of the people that we interviewed, you'll like her. She is sharp and I believe she will be a great director for us.
Let me add to that. You just toggled something for me. I had an opportunity to meet our new chief of police at ETSU, Nicole, is her last name Collins? I think it is. Wonderful new person into our community. One of the things that came up at the community roundtable is oftentimes as a community, we don't welcome newcomers, you know? So it may be something we think about with the county of having some kind of reception for these two newcomers coming in here and make sure that they get introduced well throughout the community and we welcome them. She has quite a, she has quite an impressive background.
Was she an internal candidate or a charter?
No, she came, well, she's from the Knoxville area, but she came from New York City.
Okay.
New York University as the assistant chief up there.
New York City?
New York City.
She was also at Vanderbilt and UTK?
That's scary.
Can't recall that.
Was it Knoxville?
She's been, if I'm not mistaken, she was assistant chief at a couple of large campuses.
Have you had a chance to meet her, chief?
I've spoken to all the public.
Okay. Yeah, be sure and invite her down. I think she's going to be a great addition to our community.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Were you finished?
That was it.
Very good.
Anybody else?
Commissioner Fowler, sure. It was mentioned earlier, but the Chamber and the CBB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Parks and Rec doing a great job. We have 133 teams, fast pitch softball teams in town right now. So we need to welcome those people to our community. They're staying in our hotels, they're eating in our restaurants and they're spending money here. So the people of our community might have to wait just a little longer this weekend for some of your restaurants you're used to going to, but be sure and welcome those people because that's a great thing to bring here. And I know the mayor met with a Harley group that's going to come. We're going to have a bunch of people coming to town.
At least 2,000 Harley enthusiasts.
I think the CBB.
September 2019.
CBB group and Chamber.
They get you some lighters and a bike?
They're doing a great job of recruiting that, the outdoor group and all, so we're moving toward getting some people coming and seeing Johnson City, which I think is a great deal for us, so.
And August is Meet the Mountains, which is the first outdoor festival in our area. Other communities have hosted these things and it brings in thousands of people.
Hello, mountain.
So the home base will be Fountain Park, but activities will be all over our region.
Very good.
Great things happening.
And again, good point, Commissioner Fowler. Let's recognize when we have a visitor and make them feel welcome and want to come back. So, anything else? Very good. Thank you. Everybody have a good night. We are adjourned.
Thanks. There's a bunch of them. I went over to their opening ceremonies and this happened.